...off the consent agenda and talk about. If not, I'd entertain a motion for-
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Proposed, motion passes, five to zero. Item number four, which is public hearing. I guess the Public Works Director is going to present this one, or is the city manager?
I can do that.
Okay.
This is-
I need to read the title first, please.
You need to.
An ordinance of the City of Vero Beach, Florida abandoning certain portions of 29th Street, Carissa Drive, and Park Al median lying within Platte Number Three Rural Park subdivision as recorded in Platte Book Four at page eighty-eight of the public records of St. Lucie County, Florida said lands lying and being in Indian River County, Florida providing for conflict and severability providing for an effective date.
This is an easement or part of the street right-of-way. We had closed a portion of the street several years ago, and it was unused property by us. The two neighbors, i.e. the Vero Beach Country Club and the adjoining residential neighbor, came together and divided this property up, which we agree with because we have no use. We still retain the sixty-foot right-of-way on Carissa Road, which is what we really wanted to maintain. This other portion was adjacent to it, but we were not using it. So we would recommend that we go with the agreement of abandoning that right-of-way.
Okay. Any questions from the council for the city manager?
Move for approval?
Public comment?
Yeah, well, is there any members from the public like to speak on this? No, okay. All right. We do have a move for approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. We're going to do a roll call. Ms. Vok, what you do duty here?
Mr. Howell?
Yes.
Mr. Winger?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Old?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes. Number five, resolutions.
Resolution of the City Council, the City of Vero Beach, Florida adopting the Economic Development Plan for the historic downtown Vero Beach Economic Development Zone, providing for conflict and severability, providing for an effective date.
Okay. Would you like to give us a few words on this?
Well, I was present at your last meeting. Jessica Hawkins, Chairman of the Economic Development Committee, and we brought forward our resolution and our economic development plan and went over it last week. I don't know if anyone has any questions from last time I was here. I know you weren't here.
I apologize, yes, that I wasn't at the meeting, and I assume this is the same document as Exhibit A that's attached to our ordinance that was reviewed.
Yes, ma'am.
I guess, maps and signage, you said seven possible locations. I thought, you know, the City of Vero Beach is kind of small, and I'm wondering how many, you know, are we going to cover up our city, you know, with maps and signage, any more so than we have at the moment?
Right. No, ma'am. What we would do, there are seven possible locations, obviously, with an amount at approximately $4,000 apiece. We obviously wouldn't be able to do something like that for quite some time. So it would go one at a time, and chances are those seven locations might become four or five. We might even see it only be three.
Okay. Just as a reminder to council, remember, these are going to be budgeted monies by the city council in your budget, and you have the ultimate authority as to how it's spent. They have presented a plan in saying ideally, under circumstances that we would agree with, that they would do these projects. But if it came down, as an example, let's say that you had a sidewalk project you wanted to do in the downtown on Fourteenth Avenue, you could authorize the use of these funds for that type of project. On special theme lighting, you're talking about, this would just be for a short period of time that you would have lighting in there, or is this-
The goal is to continue the lighting that has been placed on Main Street along Fourteenth Avenue, to continue that through the district.
Okay, so this is essentially permanent lighting to-
Correct. It would be changing out the light poles that are currently there.
To designate that.
Right.
And as far as costs of maintaining these new lights, are we comparable, or hopefully they'd be more efficient if we're changing them, that would be going to more efficient type fixtures, but-
Yeah, the consumption would be less because we'd probably go to some type of LED fixture, but it would be a historic antique, I think, is the type of fixture head that they would want.
Correct. Yeah, the fixture itself, yeah, the look, okay.
And we would work with the folks in downtown in order to see if we could make it uniform with some of the suppliers that we have right now that would reduce our cost in maintenance and be able to acquire the parts that would be necessary.
I am stamping the crosswalks, want to say no cost incurred EDC. I guess my basic issue with this exhibit is that there aren't very clear numbers. When it ref- the ordinance itself references Section 2926 of our city code and saying that we're being asked to approve this per that section. And I go back to the city code, and it says that the development of an economic development plan identifying infrastructure, capital improvements, and expenditures necessary to implement and support such program would be included. And although this is, you know, a great first pass at a list of things, I have, you know, no issue with the things you've identified, I don't think that we've given sufficient information on a financial basis for these.
There are quite a few items that we have actually talked to other local groups about in order to work in partnership with them. Item, let's see, the item about the, which used to be A2, was an item that was called a painted walking trail. We've actually partnered with the Cultural Council and the Heritage Center and Main Street, and there are some items that have actually been removed. That item A2 has been taken on by Main Street and Heritage Center. They are working on a historical walking trail. So that item came right off of our list, no longer pertinent to us. We will bless them and help them in any way that they need, but that's our ultimate goal, is to get these items achieved in such a manner that it won't cost us anything.
Okay, when you say won't cost us, when I look over at the, it's looking at cost strictly to the economic development zone.
Right.
Obviously, there are other costs, the things that you're expecting the city to pick up under our budget. So, you know, the terminology, it's going to cost somebody somewhere, you know, and whether it's done with a partnership, which is great, or you're asking the city to put it in our budget, those costs don't just go away.
We understand that, and that's why anything that is done that is on this list would have to come before city council for approval. And you can yea or nay it from there.
That's true.
Now, all these projects would be city projects. It's just that the funding comes from that development zone, from that tax increment funding. Or, and the city can add money to it if need be, if the council so decided.
Yeah.
I'll go ahead and make a motion for approval.
I'll second it.
Is there any other public comment or council comment? If not, Tammy, I'm going to let you call a roll call on this one.
Okay. Mr. Howell?
Yes.
Mr. Winger?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
No.
Mr. Old?
Yes.
Mayor Kramer?
Yes.
Passes four to one.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
All right. Tammy, I'm going to let you do six A and B.
Okay. Six A is an ordinance, and the public hearing will be held on May seventeen, two thousand sixteen. An ordinance of the City of Vero Beach, Florida amending Chapter sixty-two, Article four, M, Industrial District, Part Three, Land Development Regulations in the Code of the City of Vero Beach Related to Permissible Floor Area for Accessory Recreational Uses, Providing for Codification, Providing for Conflict and Severability, Providing for an Effective Date. The next ordinance will have two public hearings held on May seventeen and June seventh, two thousand and sixteen. An ordinance of the City of Vero Beach, Florida amending various provisions, Part Three, Land Development Regulations in the Code of the City of Vero Beach Related to permitted uses in certain non-residential zoning districts, Providing for Codification, Providing for Conflict and Severability, Providing for an Effective Date.
You're still up for your matters.
Okay. I just brought the summer council meetings to council's jurisdiction. We're getting closer to summer, and usually we do cancel the first meeting in July and our first meeting in August, and just wanted to know if council wanted to do the same thing this year.
Mr. Mayor, I would certainly support the, those changes for our schedule for the summer. However, I would ask that the August sixteenth meeting be changed to a morning meeting.
Okay.
And I would ask that the July meeting be held during our budget process rather than later in the month, so it be held on something like, what did you say, the twelfth?
So we'd be looking at July twelfth. We normally would hold our July meeting on July fifth, so we would cancel the July fifth meeting and not hold our next meeting, which would be July nineteenth, and hold it in the middle, which would be July twelfth, and that would be a morning meeting.
I don't think, well, maybe on the, we'll be doing the budgeting in the morning, right?
Well, yeah, I think-
The budget actually starts the next day on the thirteenth. The budget's the thirteenth, fourteenth, and fifteenth.
Okay. Okay. So everybody's got that? We're going to have the one meeting in July, which will be on the twelfth, which will be in combination with our budget meetings, and then August sixteenth, we'll move from an evening to a morning, and the first meeting in August will be canceled. Think of that right?
That's it.
And the first meeting in July will be canceled.
Yes.
Okay, so we're all on board with that?
Yeah. And also a little memo to everybody, so you can get your calendars right. And the only other thing I had was I just attached the different openings that we have on our boards.
Yep.
You attached them. Oh, okay, good. Yeah, may I ask her a question also?
Please.
I believe you have been working on fixing our live stream to open it up and make it more usable, so it's not as irritating and more available. Is that not true?
Yes, we actually did get the contract back yesterday. It's been going between, back and forth between the lawyers, and I think we're all settled now to sign the contract. And what this will do was we will have the live streaming without any advertisements in between, and we will also be providing our televising of our council meetings and our other meetings on AT&amp;T as well as Comcast.
God bless, that's one small step forward for humanity.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go ahead and go to the city managers' matters.
I have three items, Mayor and council. First is the emergency replacement of thirteen KV bus at the power plant. As you know, around Easter, we had a malfunction of that bus inside the plant. I sent you all the information when we got the bids for the replacement of that bus bar. By city code, I am required to report to you, there was $164,300, and we have moved that bus bar out into the substation yard. But it was an emergency expenditure that I called and felt like we needed to do something before we could actually do formal bidding on it.
So I'm, the process, tell me, when there's an emergency and you've got to do something, you have the ability to go ahead and do it and then tell us afterwards?
Yes, sir, I have the authority to do it, and then I have the requirement to report to you that it is being done, and then you have the authority to take whatever action on me that you wish to do at that point.
Okay, okay.
So that is the report, $164,300. Yes, yes, ma'am.
Just one question. You had a note that the funding would be modified. Where would, it'll come from miscellaneous capital projects is where the funding came from, but that it will, you'd also need a subsequent funding amendment?
Only if we do a budget amendment, we would need that. And if we have to bring forward a budget amendment, we anticipate there will be some budget amendments this year.
Okay, but for this particular emergency, for this $164,000 that you said is coming from that, then there's not-
No, ma'am, there's-
A budget amendment needed for just that expense?
Not at this time, no.
Okay.
It will be when we bring the other budget amendments, we'd bring them as a group.
Thank you.
This is just recognizing that the money had been spent. Next item is on grounds maintenance. We went out for the mowing services. We broke it down into two areas. One is our medium requirements, median requirements, in which are public areas that we have to go over on a pretty regular basis. The second is the low maintenance area, which is the Dodger Town Golf Course. We are recommending that we go with the low bidder of the Dodger Town Golf Course, which is $8,800 to do that. The other bid was between $62,000 and $110,000. They did not give us three-year quotes, they only gave us a one-year quote. For around that $62,000, we could hire one person and do the same job, have more control over it. We would supplement that with some of our forces now. But two things it really does, one, it gives us more control as to the flexibility of moving somebody from site to site. The other thing is, it will really reduce, I feel, a lot of the complaints that we get, and we have one person who spends an awful lot of time telling citizens, we've got to go out. But you have the rainy season that we just went through, you have a contractor, even at $62,000, which we think is a lot of money, if he has a schedule for Thursday and it rains all day Thursday, he's going to go to his Friday client on Friday. And so we miss out, and the residents in that general area have a tendency to notice those type of things.
Jim, I guess my only concern with this is that, it sounds to me like we could hire a guy at roughly 62 grand, or we could contract it out for roughly 62 grand. And so my only concern would be, in the case that perhaps, maybe you could clear this up for me, but if we have a new employee on, who's going to be on our payroll every year, and that employee becomes ill, or has a work comp claim, or what have you, we'd then be on the hook for whatever those costs are, plus we have a subcontractor to hire to perform the work, that, you understand what I mean?
I know exactly where you're going, but the answer to the question is, no, we would not. We may have overtime to supplement that worker's ability. The other thing is, one of the things that the council has done that has really reduced our exposure on our employees, for example, we do not, no longer have the defined benefit pension plan, so long-term exposure has really been limited. You're right, we do have workman's comp, but I will tell you that in cases, even though we require our contractors to have insurance, when something happens, when somebody starts suing people, the first call they make is to the city because it's city right-of-way. Now, we do and have been fairly successful in pushing most of that onto the contractor because of our requirements for insurance costs, but we do have exposure there as well. So it's, it's one or the other. I'm looking at it as more of an efficiency issue than I am at an expense issue, since the numbers are really close. The other is, we're going to be faced with the same thing next year. We can control, the city council can control the cost of our employees, but on the bidding contract, and as you saw, it went from $49,000 last year to $62,000 this year, and I anticipate that next year we would even have a greater number, especially when your second, your high bidder was $110,000.
Right.
I mean, it's getting almost to the ridiculous point.
Mr. Vok, I mean, no doubt we have a high-maintenance community. We want to keep our city beautiful, and I do, empathetic of all the complaints and things that we've heard in the past. With this, doing this work in-house, will it necessitate the purchase of another seventy-two-inch riding mower?
Monty Falls, Director of Public Works. Yes, to achieve the same efficiencies that they have, we would ultimately need a seventy-two-inch mower, whether we buy that day one or use it as a normal replacement cycle when one of our other mowers is scheduled to be replaced. But we included that as the depreciation cost in there to show it as a, as a full-cost accounting, showing our cost versus theirs. But to say we will buy one day one, it would be when one of our mowers was ready to be replaced, instead of buying a sixty-inch, we would buy a seventy-two-inch for that task and not replace that sixty-inch.
What's the approximate cost of a seventy-two-inch?
Those, those mowers run about $9,000.
Okay. Thank you.
You know, Mr. Mayor, if I may comment, we employ Mr. O'Connor and Mr. Falls to make the decisions in this area, and I've always believed that management's getting things done through others. And I was the one, two years ago, that showed a photo of a little boy, and I think it was Piece of Pie Park with grass up under his armpit, and I complained to them vociferously. And I think we should let them get the grass mowed the best way they can. I really not want much for micromanagement. So I agree with letting them do what they want to do.
Well, we did, we did go forth, and we did have the experiment with contracting these things out. I mean, we did make our, make our effort there. I'm inclined to agree to let the city manager make the decision on this. I know we made a decision to go the other direction on it, and we got, we got quite a lot of feedback and kickback on that. Again, I don't, I'd like to keep an eye on that situation, and if it, I certainly don't have a problem outsourcing other, other items as they come along, but this one we've, we've experimented with, and I think we've learned our lesson.
We do need to outsour, we are recommending the outsourcing of the Dodger Town Golf Course into that contract. We could not touch the $8,800.
One last question to take into consideration, Mr. O'Connor. You mentioned that it will require less time for the division manager to oversee the work. Could you give me an idea, is that quite a lot of time, or is that-
Answering complaints and calls is a considerable period of time. We do try to do a lot of outreach, Mr. Howell, and the fact that we, we follow up, and when somebody calls in and complains about a park not being mowed, or weeds, or whatever the case may be, we not only dispatch somebody out there to resolve it, or, in the case of a contractor, contact the contractor and say, this needs to be addressed, then we follow up with the resident and follow up to make sure that the work was done.
Good, and that's a function of time as well, and we all know time is money, so thank you for your answer.
I think this option gives the city the best method to control rising costs in the future, and I would support your recommendation.
Yeah, and doing the request for proposals is not a bad idea. It makes us bid against ourselves as to what a contractor can do, and it is streamlining, as noticed in your attachment, that at one time we had two people doing a lot of this. And Mr. Falls seems to think that we'll be able to do it, because the contractor can do it with one person, we should be able to accomplish the same goal.
Great, I'll support that.
Okay, so I need to award the contract for the mowing of Dodger Town, and we'll just proceed and reject the other bids.
Okay, before we go, is there any public comment about this item? Okay. No.
Just checking.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council, and I'll, I will stay on task. Just wanted to say thank you for agreeing with the city manager, the subcontractor that was doing the work. I can tell you from firsthand experience, there was situations where the grass was overgrown, also, not only with the grass overgrown, you also had a lot of debris in the smaller parks, where you had little children playing, you had stuff overgrown on the sidewalks. Also, there was a problem with a lot of the grass that was blown on the sidewalk. When I say a lot, I mean big piles of it, where the kids would have to kick through it. Another nice thing about allowing your city folk to do their job, and by the way, they're very good at it, if there's other issues in the parks and on the playgrounds and on the sidewalks, in the past, they've called it into the other departments in your city. So it's a big help, so you have, you have your eyes in the park, in the parks. So that's why to keep an eye on the infrastructure. It also will hold down on some of the accidents that could happen. When you've got big old pieces of rock that kids are tripping over, or older people are tripping over in the fields, or not in the field, on these little playgrounds, you've got some problems. So, thank you. A lot of other people will thank you for allowing this contract to go forward as it was presented to you today. Thank you.
You know, Mr. Dig, that brings up a good point. We, we find people in the city a lot of money for weeds, grass, and overgrowth due to code, and if the city has overgrowth, how can we find individuals? So that's, that's a good point.
Thank you, sir, and actually, you make a good point, because those points have been brought to my ears, why, how come you all are doing this over here, and you're, over here in your own backyard, it looks pretty sloppy?
Mm-hmm.
But again, thanks very much, and thanks for bringing up those points.
Hard to find ourselves, because it all comes from the same taxpayer.
Right. That's true.
On this, on this item, do you just want consensus, or would you like a motion?
I'd like to have a motion to accept the bid on the Dodger Town-
Dodger Town.
And reject the other bid.
I make a motion that we accept the bid on the Dodger Town project and that we reject the bid for private contractor for the median project.
Do we want separate ones, or do you want to do, we can do it together?
One's fine with me.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Was it two separate bids?
I'll second.
It's on one bid.
Okay.
It was two separate bids, so I want you to do Dodger Town first.
Sure. I make a motion that we accept the Dodger Town project at, I think it was, cost of $8,800.
Okay, Dig?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Eric?
And also, we'll make a motion that we decline the bid for hiring a subcontractor for the median project.
I'll second it.
All right, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motions passed. Item C.
Discussion of the city council regarding the sixteen-seventeen budget priorities. The finance director and I would like to, as we have annually done, see if there's any priorities, limitations, or how you would, if there's something that the council wants to add as we get into our budget preparation.
I have several, Mr. Mayor, but it might be fair to take it, take them one at a time, but I will throw one forward, which is, I think we need to cross over the OEB, other employee benefits, in other words, the benefits for employees, for their medical insurance and so on, who are retired. We need to think about how we are going to somehow or another set up a trust fund to handle that, so that eventually we have a fund that will help us into the future. That's my first one.
Okay, keep, keep going, I think these are-
Well, the second, the second one is, and I brought it up two meetings ago, possibly three, I would like to look at the capital plan for the Marina, one way or another, whether it's the proposal I made, which is neither here nor there, but I think the facility needs to be upgraded. I first saw it in nineteen seventy-four, it really hasn't changed much, one dock has been extended, but it's at the stage where, as Mr. O'Connor says, that if a urinal falls off the wall, I probably shouldn't say that in public, we put it up, but it, it needs renovation, and I would like to see us, you know, address that particular one. I do not think that the last two budget meetings, we've addressed the ongoing streets as much as we need to. In other words, we need to think carefully about how much money needs to be put into the budget for streets.
On the streets, I know we've done an annual, or like every three years, we get a report on the-
Yes.
Condition of our streets, and I don't know where we are in that cycle.
I'm not sure-
I don't think we're due another assessment this year, that we still have that existing report.
We do, and it projects out the three years.
However, we've been reasonably, you know, I mean, last year, we did the center of Fourteenth, but not the sides, which I guess is okay, doesn't look bad, and the center of Ocean, but we really, like Nineteenth Street is an example, is not, is not good, and I can go around town and name you several others that, you know, are in need of attention in the medium term, not necessarily short term. So I think we have to think about streets. Another one I think we have to think about is stormwater, and I, I think we should really make that part of the budget discussion. I mean, how do we deal with stormwater? But the reality is, this year, we have five hundred and whatever, two grants totaling about $540,000 for a mechanic, and I was trying to think the other area, downtown, not downtown.
Wow.
Yeah. And we really don't have the collateral funding, and, you know, we, we still have the situation where we have only, you know, thirty-seven percent of our runoff dealt with. So I, I think we need a long discussion of stormwater. I don't think it's something we should, by then, we'll have a report back, and I think we need to think about what we want to do into the future, but we do have stormwater problems. And one other, my favorite, that I brought up a minute ago, I think, whether small or large, there's improvements in public information beyond the television. And some of them, it could go all the way from having, as most other cities, Port St. Lucie, Fort Pierce, and so on, have Sebastian having a person actually in charge of it. This is a discussion, and I'm not trying to have the discussion today, to minimal efforts such as modernizing the webpage. In other words, when you have a boil water notice, it should flop up on the webpage. You know, we, if you take, I was trying to think the town that does such a good job of it, but, you know, essentially, if you were to take a parallel in our utilities billing system, I mean, we've had to face the fact that- the fact that Kianta, you know, has to be updated, and I think sending her people are moving on that, but I think we're at the stage where we have somewhat tired webpage, and we need to be thinking about, what does it take? Can we upgrade what we have? Do we need to spend $30,000 or $40,000 to have a more modern, functional one? Those are just topics. I'm not debating in them today, but those are my list of topics. And of course, I never want a tax increase, so there you go. It'll be a difficult session.
Ms. Turner?
One thing I'd like to see, and I know we've been talking about this, and I thought the Finance Commission was working on it, but I want a reserve policy brought to council and approved prior to budget time, because I think that certainly is going to play in how we look at expenses coming for the year.
Could you... I'm sorry, what do you mean by that, reserve policy?
How and when we would expend any reserves, what limits, that type of thing, the whole discussion that we've had.
Yeah, yeah.
We've been in the process of developing.
Yeah, the Finance Commission's actually reviewed the draft policy that was proposed on two separate occasions. On their meeting on May the 26th, they will review the final version that they're planning to forward to you. Their recommendation to this point in time has been that it take the form of an ordinance, not just a resolution, and so hopefully, if they do it on May the 26th, at one of your early June meetings, you'll see that policy, and that that point, you can provide the city attorney with your direction as to whether you would like to have that be adopted by ordinance or by resolution. So you will have something in front of you, again, with the goal that you stated last year, of it being adopted prior to the start of our budget work.
Thank you so much.
They've been working very hard on that with me.
Anything else?
No, yeah, OPEB certainly is a number-one priority for me as well.
Just to also let you know, we've been working on the callback system for emergencies and that type. Kianta has been involved with a company that's working with the electric department, so we are trying to make sure that we modernize that.
Is there any other budget directives that you'd like to see happen?
None at this time.
There's a couple of... If we are going to get into the sort of long-range planning thing, where are we going to get the regional planning people to come in and do something? Are we going to... Are we going out with an RFP to get somebody to come in and help us with the planning, or not? That whole issue.
You're talking about the comprehensive plan?
Yeah.
We do have somebody that we have under contract that we're using, that Tim is using, but I think at the same time, he's going to be proposing a position in his department. But that'll be a position that you all can debate.
Okay. The other thing was, I think we've had quite a big discussion with Monty, talking about the idea of our infrastructure, we need to begin to plan on that, replacing our infrastructure, and that was another thing that...
Of course, we have our five-year plan that he puts out there every year, but I think we do have a plan. Take the streets as an example. I think he's got projects in the stormwater and those type of things that are pretty easy to produce.
Good. I mean, with my big thing, it's mainly, you know, keeping the taxes steady. I think we can do that, and, you know, that reserve policy. So I'm hoping we can go forward and actually have a good budget season this year. Did you... I assume you got everything?
I got direction.
Well, one other thing that I think I asked the council. I mean, the Dodger Town Golf Course may or may not get sold in the window of time, and if it were, it would be a short sale, but it would reduce, you know, the $600,000-plus debt service requirement. And, you know, it's kind of chicken or the egg. I mean, we really... I think we're going to essentially need that money, but on the other hand, it sells when it sells. So, you know, the question becomes, I think we should give the city manager and the city finance manager some sort of guidance, like, you know, plan for six months, and I'm just pulling this out of the air, six months where we don't, you know, we no longer have it, or some such thing. I don't know.
I don't want to get into that. I would prefer not to do that. We did a stormwater utility for this budget, and it got us all wrapped around the axle. Cindy and I have talked about this. In my budget, I would propose that we present you with only what we know we're going to get.
Okay.
Because you just... You get down the road, and it doesn't sell or something, we don't have the revenues, and still people have an expectation something's going to happen.
And, you know, and that's really a very, very fair comment, because we had the long OEB, you know, conversation, and we were going to halfway through the year, you know, be able to sell the Dodger Golf Course and start the program, and start a trust fund, and it never really happened, because we didn't get that far. So, I mean, your comment is germane, but the only point I make to you is, you know, these lists of things and the nominal things that you're going to come up with, it's going to be extremely difficult to fit it all in, but I guess that's why you're city manager, sir.
Because not all of them will get there, I'm sure.
Does council have any other further questions for the city manager?
I do have one question for the city manager. Noticing on FMPA minutes and notes that they are projecting that they would pay off the debt on our Stanton 1 and 2. I said St. Lucie by 2026, Stanton 2 by 2027. You know, on the two Stanton projects, we have over $185 million worth of debt, and St. Lucie, $330 million. I still think that's realistic, that they are going to get those paid off without, you know, looking at any further legislation on coal restrictions and emissions, et cetera.
If everything stays status quo, the board has taken the direction that there will be no extension of existing debt, and they want to be debt-free in less than 20 years for the entire FMPA. That being said, there is always a risk, and a risk could be that you could have a leak in the St. Lucie plant. We're on the hook, as proposed before. But I will say that they have built up very good reserves on their debt service. They have done a very good job, and hopefully, the Stanton plant will be paid off at least a year in advance, that it appears, because their reserve account is looking very good. Another thing that they have done is they did a capital, a cap bond, which, and this pertains to the St. Lucie facility, in which they floated the bonds with variable interest rates, and then they went out for a capital appreciation bond, and they are guaranteed a 6% return, 6-point-something percent return on that capital appreciation bond that pays the debt, because they can use that to pay the debt on the St. Lucie plant. Assuming that interest rates don't go above 6% anytime during that period of time, it works in the favor of FMPA, stabilizes the rates, and at the end of the time, they will have enough resources to pay that off at one time. And it will be paid off, hopefully, a few years earlier in what they're getting from those interest rates.
Talking Stanton 1?
No, I'm talking about the St. Lucie plant on the capital appreciation bond.
Yeah.
The Stanton 1, that reserve account is already good, and so that is not under cap bonds. That is being done as the bills that we're paying for our demand charge, what goes to debt service, is a little over-collected, and so they're building up what is the bond reserve that is required by law, and they will hopefully be able to use that bond reserve to pay off early. Again, if it was status quo right now, it looks very good on the payoffs of the bonds from FMPA, but you're right, an issue at a plant throws us in...
Another question there. In one of the annual debt report that we received, it has a graph showing FMPA debt, and quite a bit of it is synthetic fixed-rate debt. Do we know how much of our Stanton 1, 2, St. Lucie's involved with the synthetic debt?
The fixed rate, I don't believe that there's any of the Stanton plant that's fixed. I think it's variable.
It's all variable.
And then, so the Stanton 1 and Stanton 2 would be the fixed rates.
I have one more question.
Synthetically fixed rates, or fixed... Sorry, I'm just trying to get...
Synthetically fixed rates.
Okay, thank you.
And so far, their game against those have been positive in numbers up to this point.
Thank you.
My question is, when will have a rate sufficiency? Over the last two years, we've had four small power decreases of, it was total around 10% or something a little over, or just about 10%. But the point is, the reason I'm asking the question, is if we're operating efficiently and if the numbers come in properly, I want to hedge my words, if we are... If we know that we're going to have another rate decrease, at the time we do the budget, that would drive down the revenue, which would drive down the 6%, which would drive down the income to the city. So I guess my question is, will we have a reasonable revenue forecast based upon an updated rate sufficiency?
I am hoping in June, we will have that rate sufficiency, that we'll project that right.
Because, you know, it makes a difference. I mean, at 5.4 million, or whatever the number is, if the rates... I hate to use any number, but if the rates went down 5%, you're losing $400,000 worth of revenue, or 420, as the case may be. Not that my number is neither here nor there, but my point is, the numbers are fairly large, because it doesn't take much of a reduction in the revenue of the electric company to drive a significant reduction in what we have to spend. That's all.
Now, just so you understand, when we... We don't speculate on what's coming next year.
I know.
We set ours based on what our revenues were the previous year, so it may work out that it's 6.1, or it may be 5.8, if you do it over that year. So we don't try to... We don't fluctuate throughout the year. We do it on... But, come back to your question, I am hoping in June, we're going to have those numbers projected.
So we'll sit down at least with those numbers, so we will have a projection of what the revenue is, so the transfer, at least at that point in time, the 6% is 6% of a projected number.
Yes, sir. And one of the things that's holding us up is to make sure we can handle on this decommissioning of the power plant. We want to make sure we can cover all of those costs, and then we have the optimization study that tells us some things we're doing, and just for information and an update on that. They had the $14 million in the first five years. We have been doing some circuit, and some of it is based on what occurred at Substation 1, that are going to reduce those costs somewhat, but it's not going to get below $9 million, let's put it that way.
So that becomes a, you know, the capital budget for the TND becomes a...
That is correct.
Critical.
That is correct.
Thank you, Don, understand.
All right. If there's no more questions, go ahead to the city attorneys' matters.
Yes, I'm saddened to have to tell you that Peggy Lyon is going to be retiring the end of September. What I'd like to do is to go ahead and start the process of finding somebody that's at least qualified to... There's no way they're going to replace Peggy from the get-go, it's with her years and years of experience with the city and in local government, but the goal would be to find someone with substantial local government experience at least. Peggy's position is an attorney one, that's what I would shoot for, someone with sufficient experience that they would fit in there, would be at least five years of experience in local government. I'm suggesting that probably at least two months, and the reason I picked two months, because starting now, if you find someone of experience, it may take them some notice time for them to leave their current employment, but at least two months' worth of time working with Peggy and myself would give them a little bit of a heads-up of the organization and the uniqueness of the City of Vera Beach, and working within the policies and procedures and everything that we do here. So I just wanted to give you that heads-up and let you know that unless there's a major objection to that, or if there's... The council objects to starting someone early like that, we would be having to bring back a future budget amendment because of that. Open questions on the subject?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make this comment. Peggy Lyon is an A triple-plus employee. We were just down at the ethics thing in Fort Pierce, and it's painful to sit through three hours of the Sunshine Law in...
Four hours.
Four hours, I'm sorry. I went to sleep one hour. But be that as it may, I mean, she knew more about the Sunshine Law than the presenter did, and she's almost an irreplaceable employee, so I think you need as much time and rope as you can get.
Yeah, get started, whenever you want.
Get started, because she has done a wonderful, wonderful job, and is a wonderful person. I mean...
And just so you know, unfortunately, Peggy kind of... She worked for so many years, classified as a part-time employee, she did not get accruing benefits. So actually, when Peggy leaves, she will not even be a big impact on our budget due to any payouts for unused sick or vacation time. That's to her disadvantage, but of course, it helps the city budget. Unfortunately, she has been so dedicated for so many years, and been such a good employee, she's a workhorse. I mean, like, we have to be in that office, and just the knowledge will be... And her experience will be so sorely missed, but we'd like to get a jump on the situation and try to get somebody started down the road of learning what they need to know.
I think you've got consensus on this one, unless there's any objections or any questions.
No.
I appreciate that.
If there's anything else, just let me know.
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions, the things that have been sent to councils. We have... Tell us anything about this motion before the Public Service Commission that we filed on April the 14th.
I'm not sure what it is.
City Vera Beach response to opposition to... An opposition to Indian River Shores' motion to strike. Give me just a...
That... I wish we'd talked about that with Chef, because that would be in his filing, but it's just typical that the... We had filed a motion to dismiss, the Shores had filed a response to that, and I imagine what you're talking about is the response to that that Mr. Wright filed.
I guess, just another tit for tat going back and forth.
My understanding, Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, it sounds like that may not even get finally heard by the PSC for some time, apparently...
That is correct. It'll probably be June. They are setting their calendars now for that, and it could be as late as July at one of the PSC meetings.
My understanding is, they have asked for an evidentiary hearing, but if the board allows that, it would be later. They could resolve it on the motion to dismiss, but we just don't know at this point.
Okay. Then just another question. There's going to be a conflict assessment meeting on Thursday, May the 12th, at 9:30?
Right.
Is that a closed meeting, or open to the public?
It'll be open to the public.
It will be open to the public.
But it's going to be formatted around the issues that we present to them, that are our objections to their ordinance, and then they will... And we've sent that to them already.
Yeah, it's defined in your letter to the city manager.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
All right. If there's no more questions for the city attorney, I'll go ahead and move to public comment. Does anybody like to speak on your public comment? Now's the time.
Good afternoon. For the public record, I'm Phyllis Frye at 275 Date Palm Road, and you are occupying some very big seats up there, and they represent big decisions, everything from budget to the utilities issue, to cutting the grass, and everything in between, and just want to let you know, we appreciate it. And to my item, it should come as no surprise to you that the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council has returned to Vera Beach to implement their 750 Plan, using taxpayer-funded housing and transportation project under the heading of an art village. But don't take my word for it. Do your own homework. Visit the 750 website. It begins with art villages. It says, "Communities in Florida are using cultural arts and arts entertainment districts to energize downtowns, implementing zoning overlays, to encourage the arts, to allow live and workspace in the same unit, utilizing street signage, street lighting, and landscaping, complete streets, lower vehicular speeds, emphasizing pedestrian and bike traffic with a mixed-use plan for low-income housing under transit-oriented development." Does that sound familiar? Well, it should, because that is exactly what the Treasure Coast Regional Planner Dana Little said about Vera's Art Village project, reading from the 750 playbook. Executive Director Michael Busheh of the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council writes that the project will encourage compact, mixed-use... Reading from the 750 playbook, Executive Director Michael Bush of the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council writes that the project will encourage compact, mixed-use development that promotes high density and intensity of growth under TOD, and I spoke to the Planning and Zoning Department about this last week, at their last meeting. "We've already acknowledged that the housing and transportation project will be funded by taxpayer money. The president of All-Aboard Florida's sister company FEC, a keynote speaker at the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council forum, said, quote, 'All-Aboard Florida is a real estate play that allows us to move our urban areas and improve, into urban areas and improve our portfolios,' end quote. With the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council promoting the housing and transportation plan, it's paving the way through rezoning and promotion of grants, creating more debt. Fortress land holdings and a few affiliated developers will be pushing from the top to dominate our local real estate markets, deciding which businesses live and which businesses die, using public-private partnerships where taxpayers bear 90% of the costs and create more debt. HUD will be pushing from the bottom with terms and conditions attached to its grants. These policies do not represent the principles of Indian River County for fiscal responsibility, smaller government, and local decision-making. Because of this, this taxpayer-funded All-Aboard Florida 750 and the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council were rejected in three counties and their cities, including Vero Beach. If this council continues to support these projects, you're not representing the core values or the taxpayers' best interest, and we ask you to consider this.'" Just as a post-comment to let you know, on All-Aboard Florida, we will be speaking to the St. Lucie County Board of County Commissioners tonight regarding the introduction of transportation of LNG, along with other hazmats along the FEC corridor with the high-speed trains in close proximity to the nuclear power plant, for which their safety measures are vintage. So we're hoping to get some response from them, so thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Day?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, counsel, Kenday, 1846 21st Avenue, for the record. Back on your agenda, when your attorney, Mr. Chef Wright and his team are addressing you, they use the term "we're on the deed." He stopped by my seat a little while ago and informed me, the city of Vero Beach is not on the deed, it's the FMPA people that are on there. We, as a city, as you already know this, we're responsible for what we have to do as far as to maybe ever get out of their contracts and to address the contingent liabilities. I had another quick question. A few meetings ago, there was some monies that came back from the Orlando Fuel Agreement situation to the city of Vero Beach, I think it was a little over a million. Will that go back as a rate decrease to us all? And you had said something about you're going to revisit, maybe, do we get a rate little
It was a million six for what it was worth.
I think it went to pay debt down. I don't think it came back to us.
Or, no, the OUC.
OUC.
You're asking OUC or FMPA?
Oh.
There's one of each.
The answer to the question is, all revenues go toward the rate structure.
So will we get a little bit of a cost reduction when you do your rate look-through?
That is anticipated, not promised at this point, because that money could also go, for example, if it's, we see some cost overruns in cleaning up the power plant site, but the answer is that we hope that we will see a reduction, and I'm hoping to be able to show those numbers in June.
In June, if we get a rate, rate reduction? That's when you'll bring it to council's attention and it be
That is correct.
Your decision of how you spend the money?
Well, the key is, is that that money's not just a check that comes in here and we decide how we want to do it.
I understand.
It goes as revenue to the electric department, and then after we pay all the expenses, as Cindy reminds me on a regular basis, it's a function of revenues versus cost, and what's left in that gap is what makes up our rates reductions.
And you don't have to answer if it's not a good time. With the numbers that you're looking at thus far, do you think we might be able to get a little bit of a rate reduction?
Yes, sir, I do.
Okay, thank you.
You know, one thing about that, too, it was a million six sixty or something. Diane, help me with her last name, I can't think right now, who was in the, actually in the water lab, was moved over into the electric, and she found it, and that's a lot of money, really. The other thing is, you know, the OUC rate since the change in the, the contract that was negotiated in 2008, the improvement in the contract has been relatively favorable, and that made it even that much more favorable, so part of that, of course, is lower-priced gas and so on, but I, you know, kudos to an employee that did a wonderful job, again.
Okay, we'll go ahead and go on to council matters. Just wanted to announce, we did do, I believe we hinted about the Lagoon Coalition last time around, we did get that one passed. There is no liabilities associated with that, we had a good hour-long conversation on that, but, you know, the whole purpose is, is that we get our counties, our cities together to have a united voice, mainly on the Amendment 1 issue that the public overwhelmingly passed on a state level. Unfortunately, it didn't go to what it had originally intended to, we're going to try to straighten that out and have a united front to get more of that money that's already been voted on towards cleaning up the Indian River Lagoon. Also, they had a groundbreaking for the Vero Beach Baptist Church there, was over there at Osceola Magnet, there by Good grief, 60, and the new hotel there. Also attended Mr. Smoke's 35th year anniversary. Goodness gracious, this is the first time I've ever seen somebody have a store that the line went out and around the block, started at 5 o'clock and didn't end until 5:00 in the evening. Was quite interesting. Attended the Marty Fish Tennis Championship, was really great, we had world-class leaders there, tennis players, and, you know, Tom and Sally Fish did a wonderful job, Randy Walker, outstanding, and Mike Relehi did that for 20 years and has really done a great job of getting the kids involved. It was nice to see the kids, you know, out there chasing the balls and supporting the tennis players. And finally, I just wanted to make mention, a great congratulations to our Congressman, Bill Posey, who had gotten the Federal Railroad Administration to at least give us some information as to the plans that All-Aboard Florida has for our county, although we are not receiving our 90 percentile or 100 percentile plans for the area, the Federal Railroad Administration has seen that, and it's very, it's very comforting at the federal level that the FRA is looking at these plans and found quite a few deficiencies in safety. So All-Aboard Florida has, at this time, been stopped from further implementing some of these designs until they get their safety plans in gear and back up to snuff. Apparently, there's a number of safety issues that were deficient, and no wonder they didn't want us to see these, but in any case, we hope that Bill Posey will keep on this and keep the iron to the fire and keep these guys accountable.
Mr. Day, could I ask that you distribute that for council?
Yeah, that's, I got this this morning, there's, in fact, there's a, there's two documents with Martin County assigned to it, and I believe
I have it, I'll make
Okay, is it in their boxes already?
No, I haven't had a chance
Thank you.
Yeah, you'll get that right after the
Please, thank you.
But it's a very interesting read, and I'm glad the process is on hold.
Thank you.
Mr. Olle?
I don't have anything to say, I'm all set.
Wow. Ms. Turner?
Just want to say, saddened we hear the passing of Frank Zork in our community, who had been a great activist and spokesman here at city council within our chambers. Over the weekend, they had a fundraiser at St. Francis Manor, which is, which was his brainchild to develop a low-cost housing for our seniors that are in need, and we could remember him and continue to support St. Francis Manor and their good work. I need to congratulate our rowing, rowing group once again, our Vero Beach girls under Indian River Rowing Club won medals, state medals at the Sarasota Competition. Remind everybody, we've got a gallery stroll on Friday, Friday night, the suite downtown, and Vero Heritage will be honoring Pioneer Family on Saturday, the 14th.
Mr. Winger?
I have nothing.
Mr. Howell?
I probably should have brought this up under city managers' matters, but I don't want to miss the opportunity to ask. We had a discussion about, for lack of a better word, the homeless situation, sign holding downtown. Has anybody, has anyone been able to come up with some sort of legislation anywhere that might work in our favor to stop the
Well, we've got a draft ordinance that hopefully you'll see next meeting for the first time around, anyway, for public notice on it.
You know, I've got to say something, you know, you should talk to John Pedersen about that. He spent an awful lot of hours, you know, patrolling that area, and I had a good conversation with Joe Canrato yesterday about this, and in fact, he found that one of the peddlers had some illegal substances on him, and that person will probably not come around anymore, and I believe there was another individual that had some issues as well, and that person will not be coming around anymore. But, you know, hats off to our police department, who have taken care of that issue, and I, my hope is, is that this will take care of it for quite some time to come.
That's great, thank you.
Just a comment real quick, Wayne just passed to me, we got a final judgment on the Charles Fritz case. John Frost's firm did a very good job for us again, and the final judgment was in our favor.
Wonderful, good to hear.
Mr. Howell, you want to make the motion?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, we are so adjourned. Thank you, sir.